Good evening and welcome to the December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Town of Lake Luzerne zoning board of appeals meeting. Would you all please rise and recite the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, the individual with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. On this evening's agenda, we have a continuation of the variance hearing for two zero two three A V dash six that dash eight seven seven East River Drive, Thomas Farmet owner, deck variance for shoreline setback. A second public hearing for two zero two three A V dash fives, James Morales and Suzanne Roberts, forty-nine Valeria Drive retaining wall variance for shoreline setback length and height of retaining wall and side yard setback. A new variance application for Kenneth and Amy Smuck, twenty-two Squire Circle fence variance. Good side of fences facing inward, not towards the neighboring property. We have minutes from Z B A meetings to be accepted and new and old business. And with that, I will open the meeting. First item on the agenda is the continued variance for two zero two three A V dash six eight seven seven East River Drive, Thomas Farmet owner deck variance for shoreline setback. Mr. Farmet, welcome.
Hey, it's like seeing old friends again.
It is indeed. So, um, the last time we met, uh, the public hearing was was tabled, it was not closed.
Yes, sir.
Um, in order to allow you to get more information from the A P A regarding what they were requiring from you. I understand you have received that, so please inform the board.
I have received that the um, A P A jurisdictional inquiry, there's no violation, no permit necessary. So that was pretty good. They did a pretty extensive study of pictures and all this. So, um, it took a while and I apologize for anything as it got delayed, but it got done. So, I appreciate that. Everybody's patience in it.
Uh, there is no need for you to apologize. Mr. Moller made the motion to table the area variance application until the decision was received by the A P A. We all agreed to that. The A P A has made the decision. The A P A has decided there is no violation with Mr. Farmet's deck. Um, I believe we are in a position to move forward with the review of this area variance.
Matt, would you let me to explain that I had spoken with A P A and why they made that decision?
Certainly.
I did call A P A because we hadn't heard from them and when they got back to me, um, she explained that the reason that they aren't, they are not calling it a violation is because the deck is elevated and it's within the space of an existing retaining wall. So he's gone no further out. He's not disturbed any land in any way to build this deck. So they are not looking at it as a violation or any encroachment on the shoreline setback. Because there was no disturbance of the land in any way and it's above, above the, it's above this retaining wall area.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any questions?
No, we've been through this for three months. I don't think we have any more questions.
I believe we are ready to proceed forward. Mr. Farmet, do you have, do you have anything additional you want, you would like to add at this time?
Uh, nothing at all. I'm, I appreciate everybody's time.
Okay, I would like to go through the application and.
Mary.
Sir.
Go ahead.
We went through this application three times. We have to do it again?
Uh, we still, we have not, we need to go through the responses of the questions and get everyone's position on them and then make a motion whether to grant the variance or not. So, yes.
Do you want to close the public hearing question?
I'm sorry. Uh, at this point, I would like to close the public hearing. So, we're going to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Hearing none, motion carried.
Public hearing is closed. Uh, we'll go directly to the questions. For the variance standard. Describe how the requested variance will not alter the character of the larger neighborhood or impact adjacent properties. Responses, part of house and, part of the house excluded basically from neighbors, close neighbors are similar, are similar decks as closer, closer to the shoreline. Um, has everyone been to the property? Kayla, have you been to the property?
I have not seen the deck.
Uh, well, the pic, the pictures in the package are accurate. That is, that is what the deck looks like. Um, I agree with the response. It doesn't alter the character of the neighborhood. It is, the both neighbors have had similar decks. Um, I agree with the response. Rail?
I agree. Every house down through there has a very similar deck.
Burgess?
Agree.
Yep, I agree.
Kayla?
I agree.
Question two, describe all alternatives have been explored to achieve a solution other than a variance. Response is considered a portable deck, but not practical. I agree with that, Mr. Farmet. Uh, intending to add back doors for egress, which will exit onto the deck. Uh, Mr. Farmet, I understand that if you have a concern in the winter time about not being able to get out your front door because it's snow being plowed into it.
Yep, uh, not only, even as the snow falls off, even if I'm, I'm moving it out to the sides and getting it away. And I know people have been by it. They've seen I look like the chalet from Heidi, the movie, because I'm just packed in right in the front and they keep plowing in. And this, just recently, I mean, I just have pictures where they plowed and they plowed it right up into the house. And I don't know, you know, I mean, it's.
Could I see that place?
Yeah. This is the county. This is the, that's the town. It's town, that road. Well, the guy that does it, the younger guy with black hair.
County pays the town.
And so there's, this guy had a county truck. And so
it's that, the county was on a hundred percent.
Okay, the county pays them. Nice. But it's, it gets plowed in up to the house like that. And it's, it's not, I know the one, uh, black, black haired, black beard, he'll catch it and try to turn the blade and get it down farther. Pretty good. I mean, because he sees me out there trying to shovel it. But so getting out is an issue, especially because those front windows, it's a prefab house with B siding. You know, getting up to those windows in case there's a fire or an emergency to get out and I need to get out through the back. That's the best way to go. So.
So your intention is to put a door on the back?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Um, I believe the question is answered. Rail?
Question's answered.
Burgess?
Questions answered.
Mike?
Questions answered.
Kayla?
Questions answered.
Question number three, explain whether this variance is substantial. Minor impact to surrounding area, kept the width minimal to meet the lowest impact as possible. Uh, the requirement's seventy-five feet. The deck is thirty feet. I would consider that to be pretty substantial. Rail?
It's, I mean, it is substantial for the numbers, but you can look at the property.
Oh, none of those, none of those properties along that spectrum river have any property?
Questions answered.
Burgess?
Questions answered.
Mike?
Questions answered.
Kayla?
Questions answered.
So can I? So the question is, do you as a board think it's substantial? I know that he's answered the question, but in order for court decision, you need to answer that question.
Um, I have stated, I believe it's substantial.
It is.
It's substantial.
Yep, it is substantial.
It is substantial.
Thank you. No problem. Question four, describe how the requested variance will not have an adverse impact on physical and environmental conditions. Very minimal footprint, not disturbing any trees, soil or vegetation. Um, I do not believe that the requested variance will have any adverse impact on physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Rail?
I don't believe there's any. For question number four.
I agree, no impact.
Mike?
I agree, there's no impact.
Kayla?
I agree, there's no impact.
Question number five, describe how the requested variance is not a self-created difficulty. Raised elevated, usage of ground is minimal, very limited space and to keep it as minimal as possible. Um, the answer to this is always pretty much the same. It's always almost always a self-created difficulty. It's a, my position is it's a self-created difficulty. Rail?
I read it is a self-created.
Burgess?
It is self-created.
Mike?
Yep, I'll agree that it's self-created difficulty.
Kayla?
Self-created.
Thank you. Uh, Karen, I believe this is we have the A P A position.
Seeker exempt.
It is seeker exempt.
Seventeen point five C sixteen.
Uh, any town issues since he is, is within five hundred feet of county issues rather?
No, um, I had gotten county referrals and filed, there's no county impact.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? I make a motion to accept area variance two zero two three A V dash six, Thomas Farmet owner parcel number three zero five point one two dash one dash six, eight seventy-seven East River Road.
Second.
Please.
Yes.
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 Yes. You need to talk to Karen.
Oh, good.
So, um, we have, I had, we, when you applied, you applied for the roof and the deck, the deck. We've already issued the roof part of it because you didn't need a variance on that. So you'll just have to come back in. We'll um, either issue a new zoning compliance form or amend that one to include that deck. So you can go back to the county and get that permit finished with them. Okay, I'll be, um, is Monday good for you?
Um, no, I'll fly out to California. I gotta bring out my daughter back to.
I can come in in the morning for a few minutes and do it if you want it done before you leave or do it when you come back. Yeah.
Um, we could do it tomorrow. If, what time would you be in?
I'll come in at nine.
Okay.
Well, I'll come in at eight thirty, actually. Somewhere between eight thirty and nine. Figure nine, I'll be in by nine.
Thank you.
That's it. Well, that's it. Time to do laundry. Somebody wants to trade with me.
I don't, that's kind of tempting. Do you want laundry or something? Sure, I don't do laundry. Next item on the agenda is a second public hearing for two zero two three A V dash five, James Morales and Suzanne Roberts, forty-nine Valeria Drive retaining wall variance for shoreline setback length and height of retaining wall and side yard setback. Mr. Morales, welcome. Good evening. My first question to you, sir, is.
One needs to open up a new public hearing.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay. I would, Karen, would you read the notice for the public hearing for this second hearing?
Please take notice that pursuant to the zoning ordinance of the Town of Lake Luzerne, the zoning board of appeals will conduct a public hearing on December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty at seven oh five P M at their regularly scheduled meeting. This public hearing is the second hearing on the proposed project listed below. The variance application has been amended with new dimensions. The meeting will be held at the municipal complex five thirty-nine Lake Avenue, Town of Lake Luzerne to hear comments on the following area variance, two thousand and twenty-three A V five. Applicant slash owner, James Morales and Susan Roberts, parcel number two nine eight point eight dash one dash thirteen residential rural zone, R U, point forty-two acres, A P A classification of rural use, location forty-nine Valeria Drive. The applicant has applied for a variance from the zoning board of appeals for relief from the zoning ordinance of Lake Luzerne, Article Six, general requirements, shoreline requirements, section B setbacks, a minimum of seventy-five feet shoreline setback from the mean high water mark is required in the A P A classification of rural use and they are proposing a thirty-seven point thirty-six foot setback for retaining wall. They are also seeking relief from local law number three of two thousand and nineteen, section four retaining walls, which includes this accessory structure cannot exceed six feet in height or twenty-five feet in length, in total length measured from its lowest base. The proposed retaining wall is a hundred and eight feet in length and nine point five feet in height measured from the base. They are also requesting relief from Article Five Dimensional Requirements, A Dimensional Table Side Yard Setback. A twenty-foot side yard setback is required and they are proposing four point nine four feet. A copy of the application as well as other supporting documentation are on file with the office of the zoning officer and may be reviewed by interested members of the public during normal business hours, Monday through Thursday, eight thirty A M to four P M and Friday, nine A M to four P M. All interested parties and citizens will be given an opportunity to be heard in respect to the proposed variance at the public hearing. Any interested parties or agents and citizens may respond by letter, email, or appear in person. Karen Putney, zoning officer, Town of Lake Luzerne, P O Box three seven oh, five thirty-nine Lake Avenue, Lake Luzerne, New York, one two eight four six five one eight six nine six two seven one one, extension four, lake luzerne four at albany dot T W C B C dot com, published December fifth.
And with that, I will open the public hearing. So, Mr. Morales, my first question to you is, are the numbers which are, which Karen read in the public notice, which were provided by your engineer, accurate? Are they the numbers you're looking to use? The length, the, the wall is a hundred and eight feet in length, nine and a half feet in height measured from the base. And you're requesting a side yard setback um, of four point nine four feet. Are those numbers correct?
Um, as far as the length goes, I, I'm assuming my engineer is correct. I don't, I didn't like measure it myself. Um, I did get some clarification on the height. He says that the height is seven feet above the soil and when you include the the foundation of a wall, it's actually nine feet. And the side yard setback is correct.
It is.
In your packet are three drawings from the engineer that he supplied to me after I called him and asked him for the exact measurements and those drawings do reflect what he gave me.
So is it nine feet or nine and a half feet?
He told me nine and a half.
That's what I recall.
He told me nine. I don't, I don't know if he was just rounding it off or what.
Mr. Morales, I really need to know so bottom of what the numbers actually are.
Bottom of wall is ninety-one point fifty.
Yeah.
Top of wall is one oh two. That's. Yeah.
Nine feet above grade.
But our definition.
Nine feet is a hundred and eight inches. So what did it come out to, Rail?
Bottom of wall is ninety-one. This is at the highest point. Bottom of wall is ninety-one point fifty. Top of wall is one oh two. That's twelve feet, eleven and a half feet.
Oh, shit. That's a bit. Which is a minimum of six inches, of six inches according to the engineer notes.
He put, and I don't have it, I don't have a magnifying glass here. But the changes are in these little clouded areas. Base stone pad. E L ninety-six point five. That's the upper portion. The lower one is ninety-two point five. And then the other two are, are higher than that. But he stone pads. Okay, well, Mary gets nine point five.
He's only asking for nine. If you approve him for nine, it's built bigger. He's still in violation.
Yes.
You can only approve the agenda that's in front of us.
Public hearing notice is nine point five.
Right, the public hearing notice is nine point five.
Right. And the engineer drawings are eleven point five.
No, I got nine point.
You, you gotta look, you've gotta look at the revision.
Yeah, with the revisions, they only refer back here to the eleven thirteen twenty-three town board comments. It's not an addendum or anything to the drawings. It's just a comment. If there was an addendum to the drawing.
Can you call your engineer? Is he available by phone?
Tonight, no.
This is what I was looking at, is this cross-section rail.
Oh, yeah. But if we approve drawings that have three or four different settings, the most expensive one is the winner, right? Or the largest one is the winner.
Um.
The ninety-one. Where are you get, where, where is it?
Is that the old one?
No, this is said, he's eleven thirteen twenty-three. No, he's talking here.
Oh, it's fifteen.
Does that correspond to that?
What's, this is, this, this is in the packet that was distributed to us this evening. No, this, but this, this says top wall one oh two, bottom of wall ninety. Oh, no, should be this one here. Top of the wall one oh two, bottom of the wall one oh one.
All I can tell you is I called him and asked him and that's.
That's because the wall is changing elevation. They just pick the highest points.
Right.
We just gotta base it off the highest point. One would be best just to base it off the one drawing for.
I believe this.
I think we need clarification. I believe we need, Mr. Morales, uh, you need to get together with your engineer. And we need to know what the maximum height of the retaining wall is from the base of the foundation, the crusher that he puts in, because that is our definition of the height.
From virgin ground.
From, yes, from virgin ground.
Uh, we're saying that's visible or are we saying?
No, sir. No, sir. The standard, the standard way to build a retaining wall is, is you put in the base and you bury the first course. So from the, from the ground, the virgin earth, as Rail has stated, to the top of the retaining wall, including the cap, what is the height of the retaining wall?
So we're including the foundation?
Yes, sir. That is, by definition, by the town's definition of the height of the retaining wall, it is from the lowest point of the base. At our last meeting, um, you were going to contact A P A to find out what their requirements were for this wall. Have you made contact with the A P A and what are the results?
I have, and it's moving at a glacial pace. Um, but they are coming out, in fact, my engineer will be there too on, uh, Thursday, the twenty-first. They're coming out for a site visit at ten A M. And, um, you know, any of you are welcome to be there too, if you can make it.
No more than two of you, you know.
I understand that. Well, like, if I, if I call a public meeting, I can call a public meeting. I can't talk.
Mike and I are not going.
The twenty-first at what time?
Mike and I are not going. We elect him. We elect the senior guys. We're not going.
Can't take that day off.
We got work.
I worked for a long time.
I'm hoping to be done with work soon.
Thank you, Mr. Morales. I, I, I will, I will endeavor to attend that meeting. Thank you. Ten A M.
Oh. Table again?
Yeah. Um, that being said, I would make a motion that we leave this public hearing open. And we table action until next month's meeting. Have a second?
A second.
Uh, no, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a new variance application, Kenneth and Amy Smuck, twenty-two Squire Circle Fence Variants. Good side of fences facing inward, not toward the neighboring property. I have to ask you a question, um, because on the deed, only Amy Smuck is, is listed on the variance application. It states that the applicant is Kenneth Smuck and then under relationship of applicant to property I have a box which is checked, this is owner slash spouse. So does Mr. Smuck need to be specifically assigned as an agent for this or is this acceptable? Yep.
No, this is, I gave them the application as it was given to me. I can go get a forms.
Are you Amy?
Yes.
Okay.
We're good.
If he comes without her, he needs to go on.
Do you understand what we're talking about?
Yes, I know exactly.
Okay.
Do you, who's gonna speak on this?
Ken is going to and then, but I need to speak, can I speak as well?
Yes, so you're giving him permission to speak on behalf of you.
Okay.
Actually, what if he lies? We leave him in permission to speak, remember that? That's at home too.
No, no.
I got cholera on tonight, so I'm good.
Application for twenty-two Squire Circle Lane, Lake Luzerne, county tax map I D two nine two point one one dash one dash seven. Uh, chapter and section of zoning ordinance for which relief is being sought, Article Six, general regs. That section of fences, walls and retaining wa- and retaining walls. Uh, finish side of the fence must face the neighbor's property. Brief description, history of the property. Built in two thousand and two by Ellen Rose and her spouse, sold to Amy Smuck in March, two thousand and twenty-one. Description of proposed action received variance from unfinished side of face to fence neighbor at neighbor's request. So tell us about this.
Um, basically. We've had some issues since we purchased the property a few years ago. Um, we've been trying to. Get along with the neighbors, and that's what brought us up to this point, as far as going with an application to, uh, or permit to get a defense installed. Uh, prior to the permit, we had a discussion with the neighbor, and the neighbor agreed that the fence would be on, the finished side of the fence would be on his side, and there would be no issues as far as that. Uh, we put it like a foot, twelve inches off the property line, because there's trees that, there's a tree that's actually right on the property line, so we moved it back from there. And the fence company said that would be a nice transition to follow the property, the contour of, or the land, to keep the fence nice and straight and true, rather than zigzag around the tree. Um, at that point, um, Lee Mitchell agreed, he said that'd be fine, and then we came and saw, came in, Amy and I both came in, we saw Karen. Uh, and Chris, and we applied for the, uh, permit to put the fence up, she gave us the paperwork, we filled it out, uh, she gave us the permit for it. I also contacted the APA, which that's also in here too, and I got the variance from them, they said that there was no impact as far as the APA, as far as their regulations or anything on, on the property when we did it. Um, the morning of, uh, installing the fence. Uh. The fence company arrived with two trucks and their trailer, started taking the fence off the, uh, trailer. And they started digging the holes for the fence, and putting the first post in and ready to install the first piece. Uh, Lee came out of the door, approached both the defense guys, and basically I, I came out also, and he said, I don't want the fence that way, he says, I want it facing your side. He said, because I don't want you on my property in order to do any maintenance or anything, so he thought if you put the fence. The finished side towards our side, then we can just finish one side, I told him, we're still gonna be able to finish both sides, you just don't finish the face, you know, obviously you wanna maintain the whole thing. He says, I don't want it on my side, he says, do what you gotta do, he said, but, and he also basically told us, and there's, uh, two affidavits from, uh, the fence people, and one from our, our, ourselves, my wife and myself. Uh, stating that basically he was aggressive, and he told us that you step one foot on my property. He said that, uh, you know, we'll see what happens. So we, at that point, I just said, just go ahead and do it, I'll deal with it later, you know, we'll have to go back and see, uh, to the zoning office and see what we need to do. So I basically diffused the situation, and this was on, uh, Saturday morning, so we couldn't go drive to town and talk to Karen or Chris and find out if there was any, anything else we could do. Uh, so at that point, we moved it back a little bit more, it's between twelve and eighteen inches off the property line right now. Um, so the fence company went ahead, they installed the whole fence, and I stayed out there the whole time during the fence installation, to make sure there was no issues or anything else with the, with the neighbor. Tried to be very polite and courteous to both of them. Uh, we finished the fence, and then. You know, I came in, uh, and saw Karen the next day, told her what we did, and she said we needed to apply for the variance, which I figure it's gonna probably come to that. But since the fence has been up since, from that point, which has been up, oh, just under a month, I mean, it's, things have been quiet, there's been no harassment and everything else. Um. Another thing into, uh, also you'll see in the application, there's a notice of an apology from, uh, the neighbors, they got very verbal with my wife and I just prior to this, and that's the reason why we went for the fence. Uh, they got very nasty, vulgar, and there were threats made in that, and there's also, I also have a police, a police report from that day also, that I submitted. Um. So this all leads up to us saying, we've gotta get a fence up, we've gotta stop this, because, you know, we're both retired, my wife just retired in June, uh, she's been a school teacher all her life, and, you know. We don't deal with this kind of situation, with these kind of threats and this type of thing, so we just wanna live our lives, retire, and live happy. We get along with all the rest of the neighbors on our street, we have no problem with anybody. And so at that point. We filed the paperwork, called the APA, we got the variance, and basically everything is here, as far as, we're just asking for. Some kind of, I know it's, uh, not really, uh, the kosher way of doing it, or whatever you wanna call it, uh, it's after the fact, but prior to this, we had no knowledge. That the neighbor was gonna do this, he approved it ahead of time, we got the permit from Karen, and everything was all set until the morning of, and that's why we had us flop the fence over to the opposite side. Alls I'm asking is for your permission to leave it that way and just, you know, move on with things, because it has diffused the situation, and everything's been much calmer, and. Uh, as far as everything up to this point.
Thank you, at this point, all we are doing is reviewing your application.
Okay.
Can I say a couple things? Is it okay if I add to that?
Uh, you can.
So I wasn't, I wasn't quite sure how to answer the questions one through five, so I had to do a little research to answer this correctly. Um, as far as undue hardship, so I, I also wanted to consider that we needed the fence. Um. To create like a privacy barrier, and then also to encapsulate the trees that we need to take down in order to park our camper, according to zoning regulations. Because right now, we can't park it in the back, there's a septic and distribution box, and, um.
Leach field.
The leach field, we can't go around the front. Because we can't park it in front, and there's trees, the only place to park the camper is on that side of the house. Um, next to, like, next to the property line, so we wanted a fence for that, and also, we need to take down the trees in order to park the camper. So that it's. Back far enough to be level with the front of the house. Our plans were to build a thirty-foot wide garage. Um, and we've gone over this with Karen, and she has said that we're, you know, we would be, we would be fine with the permit for the garage. And then. After the garage, we would park the camper next to the garage, and then in order to have the ten feet of the camper off the property line from there. We would have enough feet away from the fence, so in order to, to do the fence, it can't be too far in. So, and we also have to take those trees out, there was some dispute over whose trees those were. So we had the assessor come before we did the fence to put a straight string line down that line, so there'd be no debate. Um, between us and the neighbor.
I think, I think you mean surveyor, not assessor. Surveyor.
Surveyor, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit nervous.
Yeah.
So we did that. And, um, now I lost my train of thought, so I have answered the questions a little bit more clearly, and, um, I don't know if you wanted the police report that my husband filed.
I, I do not need the police report, uh, I do need, as counsel has just prompted me, to go back to the first page of the application. Uh, the first question, uh, after. Question is, subject property within five hundred feet of a county or state right-of-way park, municipal boundary or watershed, running at any county or near state facility required review by the Warren County Planning Board. Um, I do not believe. That. You are within five hundred feet of a county or state right-of-way, Karen?
I put this into the counties. Um. They have a, an app, an app, kind of that I can plug the information in, and it came back, no, no county referral is required on this one, so the answer would be no.
Okay, so I would like your approval to amend this application to check that box as no. Thank you. I know, I saw, I saw it earlier, but I forgot about it. Um.
Oh, right here.
Uh, you had mentioned prior to the start of the meeting that, that there were amendments that you would wish to make to this variance application, is that correct?
Yeah, I have a copy right here.
Could you bring that up, please?
I added some things to the questions, one through five, and then I tried to explain myself on the next couple of pages, as I could, thank you.
Thank you.
And if you want, I can fill me copies real quick, so it helps the rest of the board members.
Uh. Or I can read it.
Or if he just reads it, we can accept that.
So. Everyone in the room with that?
Yes.
On paper tonight.
Okay, I'm, I'll just.
Karen has stood. Karen maintains the file, so how do you feel about that?
As long as that paper becomes part of my record, is what was read into the record, I'm okay with it.
Okay, I am, I am, you will get this. Um.
So the revised application.
Revised application.
Is read into the rip, is read into the record.
It's just pages. It's just, the five, just a page of the five questions, and there are attachments to it.
Okay.
Nothing else is being amended.
Correct.
Okay.
So, for the record. Revised responses are. Question number one, describe the requested, how the requested variance will not alter the character of the larger neighborhood or impact adjacent properties. Responses. Uh, the response is the same as what you have in front of you, the fence is wooden, the permit was granted for the fence, finished side is on my side at the request of my neighbor. Anyone have any comments?
Question's answered.
I agree. Does anyone disagree that the question is not answered? Does everyone, everyone agree the question is answered?
Yes.
Yes. Question number two, describe what alternatives have been explored to achieve a solution other than a variance. Responses, I asked my neighbor to put the finished side of the fence on his side, and he said no, on the day of installation, eleven eighteen twenty-three, he had agreed prior on ten twenty-five twenty-three. Question is answered.
Question's answered.
Agreed.
Question's answered.
Question's answered.
Question number three, explain whether this requested variance is substantial, the response is. Finished sides on my side versus the neighbor's side at their request, the need for enough feet to build garage and park camper. Fence cannot be moved three feet in or more to put a finished side facing the neighbor because, A, because a plan for a thirty-foot wide garage to be built. A plan to park a camper on the south side of the garage near the fence, the need to have the camper ten feet off the fence line. Well, that is certainly an aspect of the question. Rail?
Answered.
Agree.
Burgess.
Agreed.
Mike?
Questions answered.
Kayla?
Questions answered.
Question number four, describe how the requested variance would not have an adverse impact on physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Responses, fence is wooden blends in with the surroundings, the unfinished side is at the request of the neighbor facing him. Question is answered. Rail?
Questions answered.
Burgess? Agreed. Mike?
Questions answered.
Kayla?
Agreed.
Question five, describe how the finished, how the requested variance is not itself created difficulty, the finished side on my side will keep. The maintenance, the fence on my side, the eighteen inches off the property line provides enough room for the garage and camper parking. Septic system is on the east and north side, the rest of the property is wooded, and a drop-off behind the house. The threat of the neighbor to not step one inch on his property, or to build or maintain a fence variance. Uh, excuse me, the threat of the neighbor to not step one inch on his property to build or maintain a fence, period. A variance is needed. To provide enough room for a two-car garage with camper parking and enough room between the camper and the fence, ten feet. No other portion is found to be within zoning requirements for the camper, the septic distribution box and leach field present, prevent parking on the north side of the house. Fence being any further in off the property line presents an undue hardship because of the land to build. A garage or the, or park the camper. The fence being finished on the neighbor's side presents a safety risk. The property provides no other possible spot for parking due to a hill drop-off in the back down to a creek with the majority of the area wooded. Trees will have to be removed between the fence and the house for the camper and the garage. Fence needs to encapsulate all the trees that need removal. Question is answered.
Questions answered.
Yeah, questions answers. Mike? Kayla?
Questions answered.
I apologize, they ran off a little bit off the.
Huh?
Kind of like a circles.
Oh, yeah. Does anyone else have any comments?
No, sorry.
No, no, sir. Kayla?
No.
I make a motion to accept area variance. Area variance two zero two three A V dash eight, Amy Smuck, parcel number two nine two point one one dash one dash seven. Seeking relief from Article Six, general regulations, fences, walls, retaining walls. The unfinished, no, that's enough, I have a second.
Accepting it as complete, right?
Accepting it as complete, as amended, thank you.
Hold on, vote?
Please.
Yes, it's complete.
Yes.
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 Yes. Make a motion to establish a public hearing for this area variance. On January eleventh at seven oh five PM.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Carrie nine, vote Carrie.
You have a public hearing on January eleventh.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. We'll see you next year.
Yes, yes, yes.
I will, um, scan it in and mail it out to everybody, so everybody can have it.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Next item on the agenda is accepting meetings, minutes from zoning board meetings. Uh, Ray, you had a question?
I just, I didn't see the October one. Or did we already approve that?
Uh, the October when we did approve.
Okay, so that was my only button.
That was done in November, you approved in November.
So. We have. September minutes. Yeah.
You. You looking for emotional approval, because he sent those out a long time ago, yeah?
Yeah, I know he did.
Let's, I'll make a motion to approve September fourteenth minutes.
Second.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
And I'll make a motion for approval in November, minutes.
Second.
Oh, no, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So.
That's it for minutes. Under new and old business. Um. Karen's already chastised some of you about training for this year. Rail? Um. So I have a question, so is, is Kayla required to put in four hours of, yeah?
She's working on it, I got one hour left.
Oh, well, that being said, uh, when Karen sent out the notification for the webinars, which are available. Uh, there is a webinar on the twentieth at six PM, which you can sign up for, the link is on that page. Uh, there is a webinar on the twentieth at six PM, which you can sign up for, the link is on that page that Karen sent to us. And it is on amending zoning regulations.
I saw that.
Which is a very appropriate topic for this board, uh, and also. Mr. Niles has informed us through Chris. That the town has received some funding from the state to. Towards that effort to change those zoning regulations. Forty-five thousand, Karen?
Yeah.
Forty-five thousand dollars, which Karen and I both agree is not enough to do this, but it's a start. Uh, so. Even though I don't need the training, I intend to list to hand the webinar on amending zoning regulations, so. That's the only. New business I have. Karen?
Um, the only thing that I have is. I'm asking you, did I distribute the date of the, um, training that's going to be available in Saratoga on? January thirty-first?
Yes, yes, you did.
Is it January thirty-first? Yeah, but aren't they doing a, it's, training is available that day as well, I think. Okay.
Believe it's their zoning and planning conference?
Yeah.
City Center again?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Anyway, um. If any of you want to go to that. We, um, let me know, we can get you signed up with a voucher.
Yes, please.
And I'll need to do that, so.
Uh, if, if you, if you have the time.
The town pays for it, please.
It's, it's, if you have the time, it is worth.
It's worth a lot.
Attending. There, there are some, uh, some very good speakers. And, uh. It gets your training completed in January, and you don't have to worry about it for the rest of the year. But you do have to take time off, except for those of us who are retired.
I'll, I'll make a note to resend it and to look at it better. I've just, I've had a lot going on, obviously.
Send it, cause I, I, I did it just again today. I received, I received a copy of it from the, the conference itself, but you did, you did forward it.
Okay.
Anyone have anything else?
I do. Like, throw us an executive session to talk about current funding.
Motion for an executive session.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Shall we close? No, we don't close until after that, correct?
They shouldn't have to take any actions. We can close it.
Want to close the meeting first, or we can come back and?
Well, uh. Yes, we're done with our business. Okay, motion to adjourn.
After executive.
After executive session.
Relax. I'll second what Matt said.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
We're done that one, Karen.
Well, look, we haven't got to have anybody leave.
You want me to close it, or just, okay?